Hopefully not. And really ultimately for me the point of this is to have something that we can, with some of these complainants, have them see this and understand.
Yeah.
Does that work? So I would just measure into.
So I will sit here when we're called up.
Okay.
So I can just scoot over here and do the slides.
Okay. Well, thank you for spending the time.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 7th meeting of the Bellingham City Council. The Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. I have an announcement that on Monday, August 14th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers, there'll be a public hearing to consider text amendments to the Bellingham Municipal Code that would allow the planning director to provide an opportunity to establish a transition area between zoning districts in certain sub areas. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Lillquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terry Borneman.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. We'll begin this evening with a presentation, and then I believe after that we have one public hearing, and then we'll go to our usual 15-minute public comment period. So there's two items before public comment. The first one is a special presentation by the Opportunity Council on Understanding Housing Subsidies. During the work session on rental barriers and concerns during our planning committee, it became clear that there was a lot of confusion and some misperception around stabilizing housing vouchers, how they work, and who participates. The council has invited Adrian Solenberger, who is a landlord-tenant liaison of the Opportunity Council, to explain housing subsidies and how homeowners who rent can participate in the programs and contribute positively to the affordable housing crisis in Bellingham. One subsidy program landlords should be aware of is the Master Leasing Housing Program. Landlords who participate in these programs sign a lease with the Opportunity Council, who then sublets units to qualified low-income individuals and families. Both the Opportunity Council and subletting parties are subject to standard lease obligations. That doesn't change. Adrian Solenberger is here to present. Shall we begin directly with Adrian? Adrian, if you'd come on forward. Are you going to be presenting from over here or up here?
With the council, Adrian and Gary, there's a panel.
Okay.
I'm here to advance the slides.
Okay. They've got the executive director working the EV tonight.
It's a privilege.
So which of you would like to begin tonight?
Sure. So I'm Adrian Solenberger. I'm the landlord liaison with the Opportunity Council and the Wacom Homeless Service Center. I have with me Gary Dolan, who's from the Veteran Affairs, who is a senior social worker who will be speaking about veteran housing. And then we should hopefully have a representative from one of our partner landlords, Wintermeyer, either Sadie Jones or Bethany Aldrich.
And I'm Greg Winter, Executive Director of Opportunity Council. Let's bring your executive director to work, Dave.
Yay. So I'm going to begin the presentation with kind of providing a little bit of a backdrop of our local demographics, both for renters and our homeless population. Advance our slide. In the city of Bellingham, we have 54% of our present population that are renter households. The average wage of our community is $11.83, and rent affordable at this wage would be $615. That's the assumption of folks not spending more than 30% of income towards a rent standard. 3,048 of our population receive SSI-only, not to be confused with SSDI, which is a disability income you can collect if you have a work history to pull from. On that income alone, the rent affordability rate would be $232, or $234, my apologies. And then according to HUD, the average rent rate currently in the city of Bellingham is $747 for a one-bedroom and $968 for a two-bedroom. However, HUD is not in Bellingham presently, so they don't realize that most of our one-bedroom rentals are going for around $800, and our two-bedrooms for over $1,000.
If I can editorialize just a little bit here.
I knew you would.
You will have seen in recent reporting that reported average rents way higher than this. So depending on where you look, whether you look to HUD, whether you look to the University of Washington's Runstad Real Estate Research Center, or Zillow, you're going to find wildly different estimates of average rent. What we know is that rents are increasing rapidly and are significantly higher than HUD is estimating.
And so then, like Greg was saying, one of the issues in our community is that the vacancy rates for affordable housing are just very low and very competitive. Don't go forward just yet. It's okay, I'll pause. What I wanted to kind of speak to, though, with that in mind, is that right now you're seeing a big transition in our community where landlords are taking all their Class C properties, which are your older, lower kind of income properties, and upgrading them so that they can kind of buy into this market of making more money. So a lot of our Class Cs that we were able to use for low-income households are now being flipped into Class A properties. And so those rents are going up. Now I can, sorry. And so the next thing that we'll look at is just some of the demographics of our local homeless population. Some of you may be aware that in late January, the Wacom Homeless Service Center and the county did a point-in-time count, so they went out on one day to try to capture the best demographics of our current population to see where we're standing right now. Of the people counted, 741 of those individuals were experiencing homelessness at this point in time. 94 of them were families with children that included 287 persons. 78% of our current homeless population are singles, meaning single male or female households, not with family, not with a partner of any kind. 44% of the population identifies as female, and 24% are minors under the age of 18. 15% are less than 10 years old, and seven were unaccompanied homeless minors between the ages of 13 and 17.
This is why I'm here. We have a little glitch in there.
So the next thing to kind of help explain is what happens with all the homeless folk in our community. Wacom County has what we call a coordinated entry system. So everyone gets to come into the Opportunity Council directly to apply for, be assessed for a housing subsidy program or case management services. The Wacom Homeless Service Center utilizes what we call a VI SPADA, which is an assessment tool that assesses the vulnerability of each individual and individuals within a household. The assessment helps give us an idea of those most medically fragile, fleeing domestic violence, or critical needs, so that we can try to prioritize not just those in most need getting housed first, but also identify the best kind of housing that fits that individual. So some people may have maybe part-time work and are able to afford some part of rent on their own. Maybe they, rent got raised and they have to relocate to another apartment, and we can provide something as simple as like move-in assistance. Other folks will score into a situation where they require long-term supportive housing with case management services, wraparound recovery services, and stuff like that. And then, so, we also coordinate with our partner agencies through that coordinated entry system, so when folks are, come into Opportunity Council, we can then refer to the most appropriate agency to serve them. So Lydia Place serving Families and Northwest Youth Services, serving young adults and youth, and CCS usually serving our chronic homeless population. This is a nice visual kind of image of what that process looks like. You have your homeless folk on the my far left-hand side coming into the service center, and then it kind of delineates the different various types, or the different types of housing. So we have the short term, again, for those people who probably have some form of income and likely just need to help with deposit assistance or a couple of months to get on their feet. We have the permanent supportive program that I mentioned. So Shelter Plus Care is something that is funded, we get funding through the BHA. It's different than Section 8 because it means that you have case management support for the duration of time that you're in housing, and that those individuals going into that program require that level of service and need in order to stay housed. We also have folks that screen into veteran housing, so our VASH, VAF, and SSVF programs. And then we have some folks that just need a transitional period time of housing. So sometimes you'll see that the YWCA, the Northwest Youth Services has something like that. And then the city also subsidizes tenant-based rental assistance for maximum period of two years to help people transition back into employment and stable housing. So we're going to start talking about, highlighting one of, one type. Our permanent supportive housing program offers an option to do a master lease situation. And I'll get into master leasing, but housing placement for a master lease situation is what we call scattered site. That's separate than something like Francis Place or City Gate, if you're familiar with those programs, in terms of our units are then scattered throughout all of Wacom County. The model for scattered site is successful in helping people kind of reintegrate back into their community, so you're able to see people maybe stay in that master lease program sometimes for four to five years and then transition into their own kind of independence, sometimes like Section 8, where they're, they don't need long-term supportive services like case management or recovery services, but they still might need like financial assistance to move forward. The benefits of it is that it deconstructs poverty in your community and promotes a more stable kind of environment for all of those concerned. Models in European countries have, are very similar, like everything that I would say is scattered site, or what they call integrated housing. So they don't separate out their low-income households from their middle and upper-class households. It also supports the ability for people to kind of, again, move past their identity barriers that may have cultivated their homelessness, whether they've been fleeing DV, had a previous history of criminal record, or drug addiction history. And it also helps people going through the mental health system to kind of normalize their mental health illness, stabilize, and not be kind of institutionalized, which can slow down the process of that reintegration. So master leasing specifically is where the Wacom Homeless Service Center is renting directly from a landlord or a property management company. So we kind of carry a lot of the burden, screening the tenants, delivering 10-day notices, 20-day notices, and trying to respond to that sometimes problematic or troublesome behavior that otherwise a landlord would have to kind of navigate on their own. We also, when it comes to, let's say, damages in the unit, if someone has a mental health crisis and does not nice things, then we, as the agency, being the tenant of the landlord, incur those costs and that responsibility to rectify that unit kind of situation. All of our tenants that go through our master leasing program receive case management. So another added asset is that the case managers are helping complete home visits and help those tenants learn how to follow tenant rules and their leasing obligations. It is, like I've mentioned before, a permanent supportive housing program, and there's also no timing-out pressure, so tenants don't, when you're serving an individual that scores high on the SPADA, that's identified as being highly vulnerable, having this pressure of having to exit transitional housing in a certain time fashion can kind of slow down their process for recovery. But having the wraparound services be present in the home, so to speak, within the community enables them to focus on what their goals are and, again, transition hopefully back into the community more rapidly. And the end is some of the benefits. So when we talk about our affordable housing challenge and our homeless population presently, landlords can be a part of this process by being open and willing to master lease with the Wacom Homeless Service Center. It does decrease the burden of property management, like I said, on their behalf, because we help with tenant screening, there's consistent rent for them, so even if we have a vacancy in a unit, we continue to pay that monthly rent. We help, again, deliver all those 10-day notices, 20-day notices, and if a situation were to get to eviction, that's also something that we have to navigate as an agency then, and costs are incurred, which is a big help and a relief of burden to landlords. Oh, we also do the, provide a free housing quality standard inspection that meets and complies with the city of Bellingham's rental registration program. So that's another benefit that they say.
Yeah?
Yeah? That's it for me. So, yeah, if you, you all have a copy of this, so if you want more information on any of these topics, then the references can kind of direct you in that way. And we have Gary Dolan from the VA Affairs, who's going to talk about, Veteran Affairs, who's going to talk about his experiences with veteran homelessness and working on trying to find rental markets for them.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I've been in Bellingham working for the Department of Veteran Affairs for seven years. I now have a colleague, a partner, who helps with that burden. His name is Josh, and he's not able to be here this evening, but the two of us together basically handle almost all of the aspects of veteran housing. Although, although I'm very pleased and proud to be part of the whole coordinated entry program at Opportunity Council, because we work with all the community partners to find placement for the homeless veterans. We have 45 vouchers. Right now, 43 are filled. We have two that are looking, so actually the vouchers themselves are all being utilized. We have what we call an interest list, which is different than a waiting list, because we base the next person coming in on acuity as opposed to chronology. So, and the acuity seems to be getting higher, and it's, we could speculate why, but the most important thing is, is that we have the 45 vouchers. Most of them are centered in the Bellingham area, and we also provide case management. The two of us are licensed clinical social workers. I'm a senior social worker with the Department of Veteran Affairs. And so basically, we're responsible for all of the mental health, behavioral issues, substance abuse issues, and it's a privilege to be able to work with these veterans who have, you know, served our country for, you know, a period of time. We are running into some difficulties right now, because, again, the payment standard for the housing authority is much lower than what it's actually costing to get apartments. So what's happening is, is that we will award a voucher to a veteran or a family, and the vouchers are good for about 120 days, and now they're running out, and so we have to do special requests to extend those vouchers, because the housing is just not available. Either the housing is too expensive, in our area, we're finding that a lot of the apartments are running around $900, $950 for a one-bedroom apartment, and the income of the veterans is very limited, and in a lot of cases, it's zero. So when they find an apartment that might be available, they can't afford it. 30% of the income of a veteran is used for his contribution to the rent, and in a lot of cases right now, we're having a lot of veterans who have no income. It's becoming much more difficult to find places, and we're spending a tremendous amount of time, quote-unquote, "apartment hunting." And therefore, some of my time spent with mental health issues or behavioral issues is being taken up by the amount of time we have to spend looking for a place. I don't know. I don't know if there's questions or...
And I don't know. Oh, we have. Wintermeyer with us, too. We can save questions if you don't mind till the end, but I did want to give an opportunity for one of our partner landlords, one of our key landlords, Wintermeyer Property Management, to kind of speak to their relationship working with us as an agency, master leasing, and this master lease program. I will give you my guess.
Thank you, Adrian. And thank you for the opportunity to showcase maybe a bit of our challenges that we have with property management companies being the go-between between tenants and landlords in this very, very competitive market. I certainly understand your challenges. We see it every day from every element that walks through our doors. There's panic in not just low-income folks that enter our office, but, but from every aspect, on every walk of life. There just is not enough housing out there to accommodate the needs. I don't think there's any one of us that want to see homelessness. It's not a healthy atmosphere for, environment for anyone. Those people that are homeless, much less the communities, the Northwest, the state, the US, it's just not a good place for any of us to be. It's very concerning, and I wish I had the magic solution to offer you. However, I, I don't. I don't have the magic solution. Adrian was gracious enough to, to ask for a candid report on our relationship. I have to say that working with Opportunity Council has been a bonus for many of our owners. We work with them in many aspects, but the Master Leasing Project is certainly a wonderful program. They offer a hand-up to a wide variety of folks out there that just need a helping hand, and we appreciate that, and we want to cooperate with them every chance we possibly get. It's guaranteed income for our owners, and it's guaranteed repairs, should that, should it come to that. And, and many times it does, and I'll address that a bit later. This is not true of all subsidy programs, so it is very, very attractive to want to do business with Adrian and her team. We continue to have a great working partnership with Opportunity Council. Our obligation as property managers is to provide a health, healthy and safe environment for the whole of the community. In other words, not just one tenant, but the entire community within a complex. So we look at, we're the, look at the umbrella factor. You know, if we've got great tenants that are threatening to leave because we've got a person that is causing issues, it's hard for us to not look at the big picture and to, to give that person maybe the attention that they need to understand what a community living means. And that's where Opportunity Council comes in, and they are a really good advocate for those, those tenants that need maybe a bit of counseling on community living. We are very aggressively trying to fill those units that are a good fit for Opportunity Council in that regard, and let their applicants have a good place and a safe place to live. There's no cap on rental payments such as with many of the housing programs, and I think you addressed that, that the housing authority just struggles. By the time they assess what the last year was and implement the new rates, they're already behind. They're already not being, we're not being able to qualify those tenants. So it's very, much easier for us to do business with the Opportunity Council. I do have to say there are some challenges, contending with those that, again, those persons that are having a struggle fitting into a community. Maybe they've never lived in a community, maybe they haven't lived in one for so long that they don't understand the requirements that it takes to make a good tenant and be part of community living. Noise restrictions, behavioral issues, not moving in unauthorized people, not all of a sudden having seven or eight people living in a one-bedroom apartment, limiting comings and goings day and night. We just ask three things of our residents. We ask you to take care of the asset, be a good neighbor, and pay your rent on time. Well, if Opportunity, Tunity Council is paying the rent, then we really only are asking two things of those residents, and being a good neighbor is a huge portion of that equation. And when somebody comes home from working really hard all day long and they're trying to sleep so they can get up and go to work the next morning, screaming and hollering in the parking lot, cussing, laughing, fighting, cars coming and going, people running up and down the stairs, those are all issues that we have to contend with and make it a struggle for those people that are not conforming, for lack of a better word, to community living. The majority of subsidized tenants are welcome in a community and are excellent tenants. We have 2,140 residents, and of those, only a handful are really an issue. So it's the minority that takes up the time and resources of, of the property manager and become a concern. Just to give you an overview of some recent tenants that I have dealt with through the Master Leasing Program with Opportunity Council, in the last year, I personally have had three residents that have taken a lot of time. One was a lady who had been homeless for, for years, and moved her in to an apartment, and she just struggled with conformity. She just really struggled. Her place, she was doing an extreme amount of damage just by slovenliness. You know, a dog being allowed to do whatever a dog does naturally without taking it out and those kind of things. We ended up, even though the Opportunity Council was wonderful and stepped in and tried to be an advocate and tried to counsel her on this is the expectation, and this is what you need to do to secure and keep your housing, she just couldn't, she couldn't do it. She didn't have the ability, and we ended up taking her to eviction. Another instance was just recently, and we had a tenant that lived at a property, and she went off of her medication, and it was totally a medication issue, but she had a bat, and she was swinging the bat around, threatening the tenants. I got a call, I went over there. She was swinging the bat at me, threatening to kill me, threatening to kill the tenants, threatening to damage cars. I had the police come, and she had, she failed to respond to their knock on the door, so they didn't do anything, they went away. Within a week's time, she had done over $10,000 damage to the inside of that property, smashing windows, smashing walls, doors, appliances, you name it. So, you know, those are, those are challenging issues, and certainly for the other residents in that complex, it was a very trying and hard time. We also have a tenant ongoing that is harassing contractors on site. It's, she's causing obstruction to the access to the property. It's their time, it's their bid, you know, they've got bid work going on, and they're chewing up, she's chewing up their time, as well as there are contractors that are now refusing to go on Another instance was just recently, and we had a tenant that lived at a property, and she went off of her medication, and it was totally a medication issue, but she had a bat and she was swinging the bat around, threatening the tenants. I got a call. I went over there. She was swinging the bat at me, threatening to kill me, threatening to kill the tenants, threatening to damage cars. I had the police come, and she had respond, she failed to respond to their knock on the door, so they didn't do anything. They went away. Within a week's time, she had done over $10,000 damage to the inside of that property, smashing windows, smashing walls, doors, appliances, you name it. So, you know, those are, those are challenging issues, and certainly for the other residents in that complex, it was a very trying and hard time. We also have a tenant ongoing that is harassing contractors on site. It's, she's causing obstruction to the access to the property. It's their time, it's their bid, you know? They've got bid work going on, and they're chewing up, she's chewing up their time as well as there are contractors that are now refusing to go on site because of her actions. Carpet layers, flooring people, vermicah people, tile people, you name it. We're just struggling. So, those are just a few of the issues that we do deal with on an ongoing basis, and thank goodness for the Opportunity Council because they are a great advocate. They are better equipped to deal with those counseling-type issues, and for the most part, they're quite successful, I have to say. And thank goodness, not all of our tenants end up such as these three examples. I guess that's all I have for you tonight, and thank you for your time and listening to my issues and my, our experience with, with Opportunity Council. We appreciate everything they do for this community.
Okay. Thank you very much. Adrian, I don't know if you want to come back up again. Would you like to take questions now, or is there more? You ready for questions or comments? Council members. Jean.
Just a quick, for the gentleman, you said 44. Is that all you're allowed to have, or is that for Bellingham or Wachem County?
The correct number is 45. I may have made a mistake. It's for the entire county.
That's all they send to this area?
Correct. And I would, I would add, if I may, that we've, of course, I don't know what the statistics are as of today, but at one point, we had reduced veteran homelessness by 80%. And I had the great opportunity, when I first came here seven years ago, hooking up with Greg and came up with some really innovative and, I think, creative ideas.
So, how many's on the waiting list?
Right now, I have about six to 10.
That's okay.
And it's all, again, based on acuity, and they, it's looking more and more like they may be there for a while.
Okay. Thank you.
Tinky?
I was wondering in any of our new housing if we have some opportunities coming up for some buildings for master leasing or where we are in, what's our need right now?
That's a great question, and this is my plug for case management now. A case manager can carry a caseload of approximately 20 individuals at a time. When you're dealing with permanent supportive housing, those folks, like I mentioned before, are going to take, on average, three to five years to reach to a point where they will no longer need ongoing case management services. Case management usually starts off on a weekly basis, so some of those folks with higher need will be seen multiple times within a week, and transitions to once a month, just to kind of give you an idea. Everyone's caseload in Wachem County is full. So, we have money to spend in the master leasing programs. We have shelter plus care dollars that can be spent, and we have our supportive housing program grant to spend, but we don't have case managers to acquire those caseloads. The national standard from a housing-first approach would assign a case manager 12 to 15. So, the case managers are already, you know, 20, 25, well over. So, our need would be, I would say, case managers to help put those people into housing, deal with recovery-related issues, and then reach that level of stability.
Dan?
When the subsidy comes from federal sources, is it adjusted for area meeting income or the increases in rental prices? How flexible and nimble is that, or is it not?
Not very flexible at all. It does set the standard that was mentioned in the beginning where their projection for the one-bedrooms, the 747, that's to include all your utilities. There are some instances in some subsidy programs where we can try to do what we call a rent reasonable in the standard to kind of show that there's nothing available at all in that rent range, and sometimes get some wiggle or exception. Unlike Section 8, however, we spoke before in work sessions about ability to pay beyond that 30%. You can't do that in shelter plus care and the other programs that we were mentioning. So, rigid.
Roxanne?
Really not accusing anyone of anything. This is just some community input that I had heard, is that some people have had problems getting the last and damaged deposit money back, and that's one of the reasons that they didn't want to continue to provide such voucher kinds of agreements. And I don't know if that's an isolated thing or if there are challenges. I'm just looking for opportunities to improve the relationship in that way so that we can get more people that want to provide these opportunities.
You mean the landlords are having a hard time getting rent and the damaged deposit? I'm not, yes, I guess I don't know which subsidy program that would refer to specifically, but I would say that if you're receiving a subsidy that's awarded through the Opportunity Council, those fees are usually paid all up at front. So, whatever the landlord asks in the initiate, in the initial contract lease agreement would be paid out.
Then what I'll do is connect that community member.
Yeah. The best thing to do is, and then I can have conversations luckily with, you know, program agencies, landlords, or whoever else is necessary.
Now, quite widely at an event, and I want to reverse that whole system.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, please do.
April?
Thank you so much for coming. I think I'd just like to make a distinction. If I'm wrong, let me know. When this community says that homelessness is one of the top things that we want to deal with, we need to recognize that in dealing with that, it's not just making sure those subsidies are there or making sure people aren't discriminating against the subsidies. It's us that start to partner with people like you to show that we're a community that will wrap, wrap our arms around people in that service. I think two distinctions of the types of people that we need to partner are landlords that are actually willing to keep a rent affordable for veterans because they are not allowed to contribute very much more than the vouchers, my understanding. And then others who maybe are still expecting around market rate, however, they, they want to offer their unit into the master leasing program but aren't quite sure. Maybe they've heard rumors about Section 8 or different things, and they really want to make sure that there's that support services. And so, that would be the master leasing program. So, I think what's really unique opportunity here in Bellingham is that anybody out there that has rentals, whether it be one or more, could certainly connect with you and can still get nearly market rate in some cases.
Yes.
And then have you along with that. And I would assume, as opposed to the few cases that, out of the 2,100 cases that Windermere was discussing, that you could also probably work with the landlord or the owner of that property to give an idea of the neighborhood context. Maybe it's a low, low-density development. What would be the most appropriate person to fill that, that unit? So, thank goodness to Windermere, who's willing to partner and give some of our most challenging cases an opportunity to reconnect, because if you don't like people out in downtown or sitting in front of businesses, they have to be somewhere, and it's us who are going to be solving the problem. So, you do a tremendous job. I can't imagine the stress that's on you constantly, because, I mean, as soon as you get one place, you're, you're looking at probably four other faces or more over time. So, I want to make sure that we get your contact information out, so it's in the packet, but also maybe we could, I don't even know if we could flash that up again. And I really hope that this spurs some people that want to call and they want to participate in this process, just for the savings, not to have a property manager is quite a bit. It's $100 every three years at least to get your home inspected to comply with the city, and that's being waived. And I think the city also waives the $10 a year fee for the rental registration if somebody's participating in Section 8 or some other programs. So, it can be a win-win for both, and I'm really thankful that you came to kind of explain this.
Good.
And I hope that our community can really step up to the challenge. I really do.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Gary and Adrian. I think we had a housing town hall about two or so months ago, and one of the themes there is that there's really a whole range of housing problems, many of which the city cannot address directly, and we rely upon partners like the Veterans Affairs or like the Opportunity Council and the Homeless Services Center. There are niches that we're not going to fill, but we can partner with agencies who do, and we can each take our own area of expertise and area of strength. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We'll go on to the next item.
Oh, well, thanks. You're welcome.
Really quick, I did want to announce, in our work, in our work groups, Landmark had come to participate, and they did mention that along with Windermere, Landmark works with Lydia Place in waiving their management fees and making sure that Lydia Place clients get placed as well. So, we do have some amazing property management companies in the city that are really working to solve this problem as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go on now to our public hearing this evening. The public hearing concerns a resolution authorizing the relinquishment of a surplus utility easement, which is located within the vacated portion of McKenzie Avenue adjacent to the Bellingham Tennis Club. The resolution in our packet provides for the relinquishment of this public utility easement, and the proposed relinquishment is coming forward to the council consideration at the request of the owner of the tennis club property. Public Works Department has determined that the easement will become surplus to the city's needs and is no longer needed for the provision of public utility services upon the applicant's fulfillment of certain conditions contained in the attached resolution. This will require a little bit of explanation. Our Public Works Director is here to give an explanation. Ted, shall I throw it straight to you?
Yes, thank you. Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. That was a very nice intro by Council President Lillquist. This is a public hearing. There is a resolution in your packet, and staff is recommending that council takes action. You may recall that you have seen several similar-type requests for relinquishment of utility easements that the city retained when the right-of-way was previously vacated. In this particular instance, it's an area that the council is very familiar with. I believe there's some discussion in afternoon session related to a current right-of-way vacation request. This is, as was mentioned, the area adjacent to the tennis club, McKenzie, between 8th and 9th. The right-of-way in question here was vacated back in 1991. At the time, as is the city's practice, if we're uncertain whether or not the city will need an easement for future utilities, we retain the right at the time, just in case. In this particular case, the owner of the adjacent property, the tennis club, has requested that the city relinquish that easement. We go through our typical process to evaluate if indeed the easement is surplus to our needs. There is typically not a financial component to this because the city does not typically pay for utility easements, so we don't require the applicant to compensate the city when they are relinquished. Council President Lillquist mentioned two conditions, or conditions that need to be met. Those conditions relate to granting easements that will, in essence, take the place of the relinquished easement, specifically granting the city a replacement easement for a water main. The easement would need to be in a form that's acceptable to the city. And the second condition is granting an easement to Cascade Natural Gas in a form that is acceptable to Cascade Natural Gas. So, once those conditions are met, to the city's satisfaction, to Cascade Natural Gas' satisfaction, based on the way the resolution is worded, if council were to approve it today, then we would be able to relinquish the easement once those conditions are met satisfactorily. So, it's fairly straightforward. I think it's very similar to requests the council's seen in the past. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have about this particular request. Otherwise, I would ask that you open up the public hearing and...
Hey, are there any questions before we open up the public hearing? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Apparently, no one has signed up to speak. Is there anyone here who would like to come and speak? Mr. Robertson, come forward, identify yourself.
Good evening. Doug Robertson. My wife and I own the tennis club, and we have petitioned for the relinquishment. We appreciate, one thing that you don't see is the vast amount of work that was put together through Public Works, planning, and the Assistant Attorney. We've been working on this since 2015. Hopefully, by next summer, if financing of my neighbor comes through, you will see an entirely new McKenzie, and so this is where it's coming up from. Just to fill in what Mr. Carlson said, this is an area where there is only an existing water line. We've already negotiated with the city, and we've identified the return easement. It's already been provided to the city. Once this is done, I just sign it. I've worked with Cascade Natural Gas. They've got their easement in place, too, except they found some error when I was gone in June, so that's going to have a change in the legal description. So, all the conditions precedent will be met. I see no need for the city to hold on to it, and I really appreciate your taking the time and looking at this tonight. I hope you vote for the resolution. Thank you. If you have any questions, I can answer you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak on the public hearing with regard to this relinquishment of utility easement? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to bring the public hearing to a close and bring it back to the council. Terry?
I'd move we pass the resolution.
Second. We have a motion for us to pass the resolution, which relinquishes the utility easement. As I understand it, we're almost just sort of swapping easements. We're removing this particular easement, and the two utilities, public and private, will be provided with equivalent easements for what's needed.
That's correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of passing the easement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes 7-0. Thank you very much. We will now go on to our next item, which is the regular open public comment period. Terry, could you bring up the list? As a reminder, during the open public comment period, members of the public are given three minutes to come forward to speak to the council on a topic of importance in their mind to the city council to hear. There are certain rules we observe, which is that basically there's no applause and no booing. People are just allowed to speak. City council listens. We don't answer questions or engage in conversation, which is our time to listen. Excuse me?
No campaigning.
Oh, yeah, and during this, this season, it's important to remind people that you're not allowed to use this forum to speak to any issue that's going to be on the ballot in November. No electioneering is allowed. We have three people signed up tonight. Carrie Kovaleski is first, followed by Yoshi Ravel.
It used to be safe to walk around downtown Bellingham day and night. Now, you are harassed by the mentally unstable drug addicts or homeless begging for money. I have lived in Bellingham for five years now, and I can't believe the increase I have seen in homelessness. Quite frankly, our homeless problem is embarrassing. A friend of mine went to Cornwall Park a few weekends ago for a first time with her kids to play frisbee golf. She was getting ready to park, park near the tennis courts when she saw some people shooting up drugs, so she turned around and parked elsewhere. She only played with her kids for about 15 minutes because she felt unsafe and was worried her kids might step on a needle. So, how do we solve this homeless issue? I have just a few suggestions. There's plenty more out there, but here are just a few that I came up with. Number one, in order for the homeless to be allowed to stay at a shelter, they need to test negative to drug tests, attend AA meetings if needed, meet with a social worker to assist them with getting a job, meet with a psychiatrist to treat their mental illness and prescribe them medications if deemed necessary. These should all be mandatory and a timeframe imposed on them to meet these requirements. If they do not comply with any of these rules, then they cannot stay in the shelter. Number two, by, by not ordering the police to stand down and allow the police to do their work. Our city, other cities do not put up with this. The police take action by making them leave corners in which they panhandle, patrolling places in the community where there is known drug use, and not allow them to sit and sleep in doorways of businesses. Our police need to be able to take control over these situations. Number three, the majority of our homeless population are people who have moved here and are not locals. An official county employee told me that a homeless person said that they were, there was a picture of the Bellingham Lighthouse Mission in a shelter in Texas, talking about how wonderful it was, so he moved here. The Lighthouse Mission is being advertised all over the country in shelters as a place you need to go. Another homeless person said, "The Lighthouse Mission is the Hilton of missions, and there is no other place you can go that serves you four hot meals a day." They are coming here in droves. We have to put a stop to this because it is draining our resources. Maybe we need to somehow implement some sort of a residency in Bellingham for the homeless in order for them to qualify for these resources. I don't know the length of time, but maybe six months, one year. Bellingham is a small enough city in which you can see the same homeless over and over. If it's a new face, then they don't get the resources. Do not encourage them to camp out on the lawn in front of City Hall. This only promotes their lifestyle. And lastly, you need to promote independence and not dependence. And just one other quick thing, I thought if we get a new jail, that maybe the jail, the current jail can be redesigned as a homeless shelter.
Thank you, Carrie. Up next is Yoshi Ravel, followed by Amy Glasser.
Thank you. My name is Yoshi Ravel. Thank you, members of the audience and staff, members of the city council, Madam Mayor. Georgetown, Texas. It is the largest city in the United States that has gone 100% renewable, solar and wind. It is one of the reddest cities, in the reddest counties, in the reddest states in the nation, and has gone 100% renewable. I take that as a challenge to Bellingham, who I believe considers itself pretty blue, and yet we're not 100% renewable. I truly believe that we really don't understand how serious the climate crisis is. We blithely seem to be continuing to live our extravagant lifestyles, over-consuming, completely, well, I won't say completely, but almost completely unaware of how serious this is. Europe right now is experiencing a heat wave. It is so bad, they're calling it Lucifer. In Pakistan, the heat is so bad, they're calling it hell on earth. This is early in the climate crisis. on earth. This is early in the climate crisis, and we're still ignoring it. If every person in the world lives like we do in the United States, we would need five to six Planet Earths to sustain us. That's not going to work. We've defined, basically, success as overconsumption. GDP keeps going up. Things are wonderful. We're consuming, we're consuming, we're consuming. We're killing ourselves. Not only personally do we harm ourselves by overconsumption, two-thirds of Americans are overweight or obese. We've defined success wrongly. We've defined success as overconsumption. It hurts us individually, and now the planet is talking to us. It is screaming at us. The fire in British Columbia is another example, and we're ignoring all the signals. It's only going to get worse. Success is living a simple life, with health and well-being for ourselves, health and well-being for our children. It's not about overconsumption. It's not about the stuff. It's not about flying to Hawaii, or flying to Mexico, or getting in the car and driving someplace because I can. We're destroying the environment that we live in and ourselves by over-consuming. There's a name for it. It's called affluenza. We can no longer live like this. The planet is screaming at us. I hope we'll start listening. Thank you, and I wish you all health and well-being.
Thank you. Amy Glasser is next, and that will bring to a close our public comment period.
Amy Glasser, I just wanted to say a few comments about a few things I've heard here, as well as one other thing. In terms of the environment, I'm wondering if the city and the county, particularly the city, since I'm right here, can start in any new buildings, maybe put solar panels on everything, and anything that needs a new roof, maybe solar panels on that, and start moving in the red direction instead of doing everything at once. Next is, as I was listening to the homeless presentation, I started thinking about the Tiny Homes Project that Homes Now, Not Later is working on, and thinking, why, how could the city maybe work with Homes Now, Not Later, and Opportunity Council to get some of those tiny homes in some of our areas where we're lacking in homes, but in need of tiny homes and services. So, I'm hoping that we can maybe pull that program in together, which is actually building the tiny homes, to actually meet a need for people who might not need so much supervision, as well as maybe little projects which had a service building for a case manager to come in and actually provide the service. I know that I would go to Everson for a day if I had an office to do it in, and I would see six or eight clients there, but I can't because I can't afford a building in each city. So, I think those tiny homes and little projects, hamlets per se, would be really small and in everybody's backyard already, so there's no way of saying, "Not in my backyard." Then they'd at least be in homes, so the woman who is concerned about lying in the middle of the street or in front of businesses, we can't not deal with the problem. We can't tell people they have to leave. We can't kick them out of the city or arrest them for being homeless, so we've got to do something. So, these might be additional ways to deal with it. The last thing is, if the city has anything to do with the Wildwood, I know this is irrelevant to what I was just talking about, switch gears to Lake Watcom. Wildwood Resorts, you have nothing to do with that, right? So, do you have, if you have any potential to convince the county that letting a project that has slips for motorboats and ski-does in our drinking water seems like the absolute wrong thing we should be doing. I would love to see us start grandfathering in any homes that are sold. They no longer can have motorboats, and no projects that could bring any more in. We just have to be a little bit brighter when it comes to our drinking water. Like, many people have said, back east in many other cities, you can't get near your drinking water, let alone swim in it, take your dogs in it, put motorboats in it. It just seems like a crazy way to use our money is to clean up the water that we drink. Thirty minutes, 30 seconds short. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Amy. That brings to a close our public comment period. We will now go on to reports of our committee meeting minutes. So, this afternoon, several committees met. The first committee was actually a special meeting in the entire city council to consider the vacation of two portions of the streets, of streets in different parts of town. Bear with me for a minute. The first one is a, we discussed the relinquishment of a, that's the utility easement, sorry. These things run together. The first one was a closed record hearing to consider petition to vacate the southerly portion of McKenzie Avenue between 8th and 9th Streets. This is a portion of our right-of-way. The petition has requested vacating the subject right-of-way. Under the procedure, if the right-of-way is vacated, the city requires compensation for the vacation. In this case, the petitionist proposed to develop an ADA-accessible public sidewalk along the south side of McKenzie Avenue abutting their property. The value of that work is in excess of the estimated value of the property. This afternoon, the committee, the council as a whole, made a motion and passed the motion to accept the findings of fact, the conclusions of law, and the recommendations of the hearing examiner, which is to accept the petition for vacation. And we accepted the recommendation to accept the construction of the public sidewalk as adequate compensation. What now before us is, would be, an ordinance to enact that vacation. Council members?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion before us to pass an ordinance relating to the vacation of the southerly portion of McKenzie Avenue, generally located between the center lines of 8th and 9th Street, abutting Lot A of the tennis court. Just for information, we just heard about a utility easement. This is actually a vacation which just takes a little larger bite outward and inward, and expands the vacation that occurred in 1991. So, that was a utility easement. This is a vacation. They're similar, but a little bit different. Any discussion on this issue? I have a comment on this. This whole kind of strange set of actions that were taken since 1991 and forward have turned what was a public right-of-way now into a public parking strip. And I wish I could revisit that decision, but as we were explained to us earlier today, we can't go back and revisit earlier decisions. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the whole process, but I understand there's no legitimate basis to vote against this motion. I will be abstaining. Any further discussion? All those in favor of passing this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. That passes 6-0. The next item was another street vacation. This street vacation is on the north part of town. The petitioner intends to construct wetland mitigation and repairing enhancements in the subject rights of way in order to develop the Aurora Court preliminary plat. The square footage of the new rights of way to be dedicated, dedicated under the preliminary plat exceeds the square footage of the rights of way to be vacated. So, again, a similar issue. If we vacate rights of way, the city expects and requires compensation. In this case, in compensation, the way the ordinance is written is they will either have to pay us the value, which I think was $175,000 or $185,000, which one was it?
$150,000.
$150,000. Either have to pay us the cash value or dedicate properties new rights of way equal to or greater than the vacated right-of-way. The intended wetland mitigation or repair enhancements will be according to a preliminary plat, which apparently has already been approved. This afternoon, the council accepted the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and recommendations of the hearing examiner, and we also agreed with the recommendation to accept the future dedication of rights of way as adequate compensation for the vacated rights of way. I'm looking now for someone to make a motion with regard to the ordinance.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion before us to approve the ordinance vacating the southerly portion of Bennett Road between Stewart and June Roads, and the westerly portion of June Road between Bennett Avenue and Northwest Avenue. Again, this is the Aurora Court preliminary plat, which is just north by quarter-mile or so of where the new Costco is located. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Thank you very much. The next committee to meet this afternoon was the Justice Committee, and the chair for that is Councilmember Abel Barker.
We just had one item for committee. It was information only. This was our first meeting of the Justice Committee, which is basically allowing dedicated council time to explore and understand the complexities of the justice system. Today, we had a report from Judge Lev and Court Administrator Darling Peterson, giving a six-month report on jail programs impacts and report and impacts of pretrial transfers to Yakima. We had, I think, a very informative and, I think, very informative discussion today. If you want to see that, you can go back to the city's website, and you can watch the findings and the information there. Some of the synopsis is that since 2016, we've had 372 participants in the electric and/or alcohol home monitoring program. This means collectively, they have served 7,286 days out of jail, saving the city nearly $700,000 since, so that's been about 18 months. Not to mention also the social, family, and community benefits that are unmeasurable when somebody's not removed from their home and their family. Let's see, those who did those services on their sentences through the electrical monitoring, we've only had seven warrant status, so that's a 98% success rate. So, it's pretty, pretty exciting. They also discussed the impacts of pretrial transfers. That's pretty fascinating. We decided we would have more conversations related to that, and it looks like for future, we may have Commissioner Smiley come to discuss the role of mental health court and further educate us on the judicial process with that end of committee.
Thank you very much, April. The next committee that met this afternoon was Public Works Public Safety, and that committee is chaired by Councilwoman Terry Bornham.
Thank you, Michael. We had one item before the committee today, and that was the Bellingham Police Department staff provided a report on enforcement efforts for July 4th, 2017. Deputy Chief David Dull and Lieutenant Jason Monson presented a report. Basically, I think this report was happening partly because we'd received some calls and complaints about why isn't the city and the police doing more to enforce people shooting off fireworks. And so, the police department came and talked about what was happening and their response to it. And one of the interesting parts of it was they listed a number of calls and incidents they received from July 1st through July 5th on each day. But, they also listed not only the number of fireworks calls and number of incidents, but the general service calls. For just an example, July 3rd, there were 33 calls about fireworks regarding 16 incidents out of two, but there were 252 calls about general situations. So, and we have, given the limited amount of police, you may have eight police officers patrolling the city, the ability to respond immediately to every call is quite limited because they have to set, one, they have to set priorities. You might be starting off on a call for fireworks, but then another call comes in about a car break-in, or domestic violence, or whatever. The police have to set those priorities, and those kind of priorities of violence or property crimes, or whatever, do take priority over calls for fireworks. The other good statistic was showing how they presented statistics from each year from 2014 through 2017. In the numbers of calls in 2014, we had 221 related fireworks calls. This year, we're down to 96. I think one of the things that we realized when we passed this ordinance to begin with is that we're not going to be able to stop all fireworks. We will, the police will respond when calls are made, and it's important to call and report them. But, the numbers continue to go down because people realize it is against the law, and most people refrain from the use of fireworks. So, the ordinance itself is working, but we knew when we passed it, it's not going to eliminate all calls. And trying to stop it all, we do the best we can, respond as quickly as possible, and encourage people to call. We're going, the police are going to be working with neighborhood associations next year for more outreach and proactive work, you know, to find out are there certain houses where fireworks usually are fired, you know, each year, so that they can talk to them prior to the 4th. End of report.
Okay, thank you very much, Terry. The next committee which met this afternoon is the Finance and Personnel Committee, and Roxanne Murphy is the chair of that committee.
We had one agenda item earlier today, and it was a second quarter financial review. As the finance chair, I can say that was mostly good news. And so, for more information, I just double-checked, and the report that we heard earlier today is on our city's website, and it's through the finance department and reports. And you can also watch the video of our discussion through our city's website to form your own opinions about whether that was good news. So, end of committee.
Thank you very much, Roxanne. The final committee which met this afternoon is the committee of the whole. We had one item before us this afternoon, which is a discussion of the Bellingham logo refresh. The administration is considering refreshing the current Bellingham logo. We'll get it up on the screen soon. Staff presented the proposed logo. This is black and white, but the colors are blue and green, similar to the recently adopted Bellingham flag. And there was a discussion of the considerations with regard to change in history, the costs, and implementation. The logo is an administrative decision, but the mayor was requesting her input from the city council. I think the discussion this afternoon centered primarily on a transition plan. There was concern expressed that we minimize costs by allowing time for natural replacement, that we don't go out and rebrand every single thing that has the old logo on it. And the administration would be working on some kind of a transition policy or plan, which might take several years, depending upon how the logo is used and where it's used. Mayor Lindell, anything more I should add to that?
Well, there's things that are digital. They'll be easier to change, so Councilwoman Vargas won't have to wait forever for her new name tag and her cards and her whatever else pinky that you wanted. So, some of those are easy, and they don't cost any, anything. Some of them are a little more pricey and might be done over time. So, what the discussion was this afternoon is putting money aside in the budget for a certain amount of transition time. So, you know, as we change uniforms, as we do different things, it doesn't cost anymore to change the logo that's on the uniform from that one to that one. So, we'll do, we'll obviously bring something back to you just to show you how it's implemented, but I appreciate the council's understanding and support of getting this done, but not taking away, I think Dan was asked a question, not taking it away from some of the vital priority services that we can't wait on. So, thank you.
You did decide to use a pink background, right?
Yeah, I think we're gonna, no.
One of the things we, one of the things that was discussed...
I did not request any pink.
One of the things that was discussed this afternoon is that the current logo is 35 years old, and it kind of is very poorly suited to modern uses, modern digital uses, reproduction. It has a great detail, it simply doesn't reproduce well, doesn't translate well in the black and white, doesn't translate well in small. So, just some practical considerations. And that was for information only.
Michael, one of the other things I didn't mention this afternoon is, I get confused sometimes when I see county trucks and city trucks. So, that won't happen anymore.
Yeah, their logo's got a slight angle to it, and ours has a flat horizon. That's about it. Oh, one of the things to mention is that there are different insignia that are used for the fire department and for the police department. For particular reasons, those agencies do not use the city logo. They have their own logo for immediate identification. Okay, going on. Report from the executive session. We had two items before us today. Both were litigation matters. The first was Swaddes versus City Bellingham. Staff provided information on a litigation matter. It was for information discussion only. Council took no action. The second was also litigation, Newen versus Sucey et al. Again, staff provided information on this litigation matter. There was information and discussion, and the council took no action. We now turn to the mayor's report.
Thank you. I have stuff. That's kind of fun. First of all, the service dollars for that, was it Amanda, Amanda was talking about, the Opportunity Council was talking about that came out of our...
Council was talking about, that came out of our, some of that came out of our brainstorming lunch. We're working on that right now. So that's something that will be proposed for the budget, the midterm budget adjustments. But because it's the first year of the budget, we probably can start moving forward on it, and then we'll just be adding the money, you know, midterm. So I'm really excited about that. That's actually an opportunity to sit down and meet with people, and for an hour, and have something meaningful and significant come out of it that might make a difference in people's lives. And I really appreciate that that happened. Secondly, the primer on the criminal justice kind of system that Pinky was asking about, Brian has been working on that. So we'll sit down with April and see how much or how little you think is appropriate. But I think it's important, too. We're all asking people to describe, well, what is that, and what does that mean? And I think that I wasn't really clear before about exactly what steps are taken and what happens, you know, here and here and here. So we'll bring something forward, and you can edit what it is that you either want or don't want. When we had our financial presentation, Brian is so precise and complete with everything, but one of the things that I look forward to every year is the state sending us our million-dollar check for the lift project, which we're still working to get our $25 million from the state on that, not tied to the capital budget. So we have our road projects that are moving forward, and in talking with Brian, as we move past the individual, really well-defined projects, we need to be very careful in allocating money to the lift project that can be used as match with the state. So we'll be working on that unless there's some big hoop-de-doo thing that happens that we can, you know, that we can use. It's all together, one project, like the roads. But I'm excited about that, because every year, that's a million dollars that comes to our city that helps us in our economic development and cleanup. And I really appreciate that. And finally, before we go on to the mayor's appointments, there was an incident this weekend, and many of us have gotten emails about it, having to do with some people on a bus. And there's a lot of misinformation about that. And so I thought I'd just take a little bit of my mayor's time to, first of all, compliment our police department on helping people who needed help. That's the main thing for me. And so these officers handled the situation, I think, very well. They were called. They were not taking independent action. So they were called, stopped a bus that had migrant workers on it, that had been let go at a farm, dropped off at the bus, wanted to drop them off at a bus station with no money. No way to move from being in the bus to somewhere else, or staying here. And the officers insisted that they be taken back to Everson, where they were from, and be given their paychecks. They arranged for a place for them to have their paychecks cashed, so that they had some resources to then make, you know, a decision about whether they wanted to stay here, or go there, or wherever they wanted, but at least they had some resources to do that. And I really wanted to thank the officers' advocacy on behalf of those people who needed help, and also to take the opportunity to correct some of the information that's out there. Now, secondly, many people potentially will or won't believe what I'm telling you tonight. So what I'm saying is, they're going to look at the body cams. They were wearing body cams. Thank heaven for body cams. I'm, every day, happy that we have those to both back up our police, or prove that there's a problem, either side. I'm for both of those. But after they redact what needs to be redacted, because it's confidential, then those will be available for public records requests, and there's nothing in them that we're concerned about hiding, or, you know, there's nothing. So those body cam films will be available, and hopefully that will clear up anybody else's continued questions about what really happened. So, those are kind of all good news things, I think, in a way. I have two appointments. One you need to approve, one I'm just going to tell you about. The first is Heather Kaye to the Lake Watcom Watershed Advisory Board, and that requires your approval.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion before us to approve the appointment of Heather Kaye to the Lake Watcom Watershed Advisory Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Heather is appointed.
And then the second one is a reappointment of Joe Timmons to the Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Committee for your information. He is an excellent Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Committee meeting. He keeps us informed about what's happening up at the university, and has some really good ideas from a little bit more youthful perspective than some of us that sit there every month. So, no offense to your mother, April. But the truth is, it is made up of mostly older property owners, and it's nice to have some variety there of younger people, people that are renting, you know, just a different mix of people to talk about what's going on in all the neighborhoods. And that's just for your information. And does anyone have any questions for me? I don't think I ever asked you that, but I thought I would. I thought I would tonight, since it's only 8:15. And Jean's not out the door.
No, not yet. Trying.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next up is the Consent Agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to move approve the Consent Agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent Agenda is passed. We move on to our last agenda item, which is final consideration of ordinances. We have one ordinance to consider.
Agenda Bill 21671, an ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, awarding a franchise to Quest Broadband Services Incorporated, Doing Business as Entry Link, to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system in the City of Bellingham, setting forth conditions accompanying the grant of the franchise, and providing for city regulation and administration of the cable system.
Move through the final.
Elizabeth, you have the name of the person who made the motion?
Pinky.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Jean Knudsen.
I'll think about it. Aye. Just for those two.
Michael Lilquest.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Yes, aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Ordinance passes 7-0.
Thank you. Is any further business for the Bellingham City Council? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Yep.